That's about to fall to fall. So I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting. At six thirty here in beautiful Tarpon Springs, Florida. January twenty seventh and call the order roll call, please.
Mr. Cruz-Cutis.
Here.
Mr. Zambalis.
Here.
Mr. Zambalis.
Here.
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 Okay, before I say the pledge of allegiance, please anybody in the audience and anybody here please. Cell phones. This one I like. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Vessi, you've led us a moment of reflection. I'm gonna ask if you would do that as well.
I have a bit of excitement as we enter into twenty twenty five. It was like spring outside. We've had the epiphany and it just seems like there's so much good ahead of us for the year. And I think that we can all enjoy being together as we do our work for the year and hope for the best and make good decisions.
Amen. I guess we're gonna move on to the minutes for the November eighteenth and the December sixteenth agenda. Approval of the minutes. So I the way I'd probably like to do it because it's on a consent agenda. Unless somebody wants to pull or has a question on any of the minutes that are that have. For either November eighteenth or December sixteenth, we could pull that. Otherwise, I would like to see one motion to accept both and I'm back asking counsel. That would be perfectly okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. I make a motion to accept both. There are second. Any discussion as to either of them? Okay, that being said, call for the call for the motion, please.
Ms. Swenson.
Yay.
Ms. Early.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Frances.
Yes.
Mr. Zambalis.
Yes.
Mr. Vessi.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzcutis.
Yes. Okay, moving on. There's only one item on on tonight's agenda. That's ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero one. Land development code amendment, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Pat.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Pat McNeese Planning Supervisor. What you have before you this evening is, let me find the page. Sorry. This is the existing ordinance that regulates food trucks that is before you this evening. This ordinance came about in twenty twenty in response to basically a state preemption on local government. Removing your ability to prohibit food trucks. We prohibit it. We did prohibit food trucks in Tarpon before that. The Board of Commissioners responded immediately to that when it went into effect. And we are allowed to regulate food trucks in the city. So there the ordinance was adopted in September of twenty twenty. To do that, provide standards and a process. It's been amended a couple times since then in twenty twenty two. And there has been some recent discussion about potential updates. To increase the flexibility for food trucks, especially in the special area plan. Which is basically the downtown and sponge docks. So the board discussed that on the seventh of January. And directed staff to provide a a draft ordinance, which is before you this evening. So some of the highlights, the major revisions are that the current food truck allowable zonings. Those are basically industrial zonings, highway business and commercial plan development. Would be expanded to any non-residential zoning or use. So right now, food trucks are allowed to operate on basically during the day. In highway business, which is out mostly out on nineteen. Industrial mostly north of the river and then commercial plan development. There's a couple of those. Lowe's Hardware is an example of one of those. This revision would allow up to two trucks between seven AM and ten PM. It does not apply to vacant land. That's a current standard. This ordinance revision would expand that to include improved land that does not have permanent restroom facilities. So that was to address the potential for food trucks in basically in commercial parking lots. That was to prevent that type of activity. We still have temporary use approval for multi-day events. We have that now. So when an establishment wants to have a multi-day event, they come before the TRC and get a temporary use approved. With with conditions or standards if those are applied. So that process would still happen the way it does now. Except this revision would remove the number of events. That a single establishment could ask for and it would remove the minimum time separation between events. It would continue to limit the individual events to three days. So that's basically the summary. I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
I do have a few questions. Didn't we not carve out? The restriction for the waterfront or the sponge dock area where that was a other than that's what was grandfathered in. But any ability to have food trucks on on some of the properties down there? I didn't see that in here. Is that on in a different part of this ordinance?
Yeah, it's a different part. So we so there are two parts to the to the full ordinance. The first part is for temporary food trucks. That's fifty six oh five. That's where we're making the revisions. If on your your draft code, if you flip the page two, you'll see section fifty six oh six. That's where the food truck, permanent food truck within existing eating or drinking establishment. Process was established. That was done. We had two in existence when that was adopted. We've had, since this was adopted in twenty twenty, we've had two more go entirely through the process. Is if memory serves, that's it. We've had two more. So one downtown and one down at the docks. So that was the process put in place to allow for an accessory food truck permanent establishment.
Where was the restriction with regard to? I didn't. I'm trying to find out maybe if you could point it out to me. With regard to the the sponge dock or waterfront district.
Pat, could you could you put it up here?
It's in here. Just if you want to point me to the number, I can read it, but I just didn't see.
Yeah, I don't know. You're gonna be able to read it. I don't get this. This is exhibit eight. So. So fifty six oh six is mobile food dispensing vehicles as accessory to food and drink establishments. These were the standards that you had to to abide by in order to have. A food truck anywhere at the docks. Right now, they're not allowed as a temporary or daily. Use. They're only allowed as.
Special event.
No. Okay, so and let me let me clarify too. None of this has to do anything to do with city approved special events. And I know you guys know this, just a reminder. So when the Board of Commissioners approves an event like First Friday, that's a city sponsored event. Food trucks come, they're at the event, they go. But what the temporary section is being it would be revised to do would be. To allow a daily use of a food truck. They still drive on the site and then they drive away at the end of the day. They don't stay there. That that's what this expansion would allow. Right now, that's not allowed at all down at the docks.
But if we change this, the question is, would that be allowed?
Yes.
Okay, so you know, one of the things that we had objected to is protecting the bricks and mortar restaurants down at the sponge docks. And by having, you know, and I represent several people down in Sponge Dock area. Some of them are just vacant landowners. And and the question then becomes, and I pose to you, what would stop them from being able to utilize? You know, they may have a structure on the property, but to allow somebody to drive up to their food truck. You know, generate revenue and drive away that same day. When we're trying to protect the the bricks and mortar establishments down at the sponge docks.
That's what this would allow. So 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 keep keep in mind too that that the food truck has to be. On private property, can't be in the street. It can't be on city right of way or sidewalk. So. I'm gonna venture to say there are not. A lot of properties that could do this because most of the buildings down there or a lot of them are lot line to lot line. The room they have is behind this. The the ordinance is being written to. Not allow the commercial parking lots to do it. So yeah, this would allow on those that have the room to do it. And are not obstructing anything. This this would allow that this would allow someone to move a food truck on the site. Run it for the day or the morning or the afternoon or whatever and drive back off. Yeah.
Got questions on here. Go ahead.
How do we make sure that? I am so sorry. How do we make sure that there's the appropriate access and area to pull off the road and parking and? Are we saying that if somebody has a private lot, they want to let out their own truck or somebody else's truck park on it? Is there any oversight at all in terms of how that's working out or what they have to show before they can do it?
Yes, so if you look at fifty six oh five. Item F two. The owner has to obtain a business tax receipt. To allow operation of food trucks on the site. And when they apply for that. A separate business tax receipt, which is the city's version of an occupational license. When they apply for that, they're gonna have to show where a food truck or two food trucks would.
If I could follow up with another question. Sorry. In other communities before, I have seen where they have an area designated for food trucks. And these food trucks, there would be maybe anywhere from seven to ten food trucks. And it was adjacent to a park and it was in a big empty lot. And they would always be there on a certain day. I mean, all these trucks. So you could. Show up there, walk around, decide what you wanted to eat or drink. It was actually kind of nice. And it was very controlled.
Yes, that the board did discuss that possibility as well on January seventh. We're kind of generically calling that a food truck court. And it is, as you said, kind of the idea is modeled after those types of kind of events that you've seen. And you may see an ordinance come before you on that in the future, but this one's just for the temporary.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question here and it's in regards to fifty six oh five G. In regards to how long can some? One be parked at a particular location? And it says that it's if it's an approved site plan and in the location where outside of storage of a vehicle is a permitted use. And the reason I'm asking that is there is a food truck of Greek food located at the gas station at Pinellas and Tarpon, and they have been there for weeks. Why are they allowed to just park it there? I think they were there for the epiphany and they are still seated there. Are they allowed to?
Right now, they're not allowed. That's the answer.
But they're there. So what is the city doing about it?
Are they operating? Are they actually?
They're not operating it right now. No, it's not being operated. It was may have been operated.
Yeah, that that property is in a special area plan and this section of the code. Basically directs the person to store it either if they're from out of town. Wherever the the business operates out of or if they're in town into in an area that allows is permitted for storage outdoor.
Because that is a.
That area is not so. It's not allowed.
Okay.
I have no idea if code enforcement's received any complaints about it, but.
Well, I know that Gene Hungefill of the chamber was complaining about it at the last chamber meeting.
Yeah, I would advise her to call code enforcement. That's what would activate some action.
Okay, thank you.
Has there this pre-exists me being on the board? Has there ever been any discussion with the board with regards to? Local vendors versus non-local, meaning preferred local vendors. Keep their money here. Non-locals come, go. Has there ever been any kind of discussions about?
I don't know. I know they do talk about local contractors and such things.
Yeah, just if there's.
City manager is here this evening. He may he may know. But no, I don't know if they talked with respect to food trucks.
Yeah, food trucks that are local.
Yep.
And define local versus non-local. I mean, I know the ones that we have that are city events. We do see a lot of non-locals coming in, but if there's private, I wonder if we could if there's a discussion that could be had about.
I would ask legal whether or not that would be deeply discriminatory. So I think that would be more of a legal question than anything.
Yeah. So that's the question is, could we kind of specify local food trucks or that would be? It would be probably tough to enforce. I'm not sure how we do that or preference for local, but would that be discriminatory is the question.
I think some additional research may be required to answer that question in its entirety because it could very well be deemed discriminatory.
I unless anybody else on the board has questions, I have a I have a couple more questions if that's okay, Pat. Does anybody else have questions before I?
If you want to go ahead and finish.
Okay, first of all, I remember when we did this and and so the question that becomes what's driving this change? Okay. I thought we vetted when we did the food truck ordinances several years ago. You know, we vetted that pretty well. And so I just want to know, A, what's driving this this change? Number one. I look at the amendment and instead of having one food truck, the amendment authorizing two. I understand the the they must they must operate if it's vacant land or approved land with they have to have a permanent onsite bathroom facility to patrons. I would look at hand also to provide handicap access. That that probably is probably spelled out, but I guess the more important question for me is what's driving this change?
I think that that's something the boards talked about. The method put into place to kind of address this possibility at the docks. I mean, we've really only seen two projects come forward, so there doesn't seem to be a big demand for that. And. City manager is here to.
Hi, Charles Rudd, City Manager. I guess you could say I'm driving the process. When I came to town, the food trucks first came to my attention with the hurricane, you know. We we kind of waived the requirements for Airbnb and for food trucks and so forth. And that's when I discovered that you couldn't the breweries couldn't have rotating food trucks. And actually, my wife and I had a food truck for a while years ago and we we would visit some breweries and. One of the nice things going to a brewery is the rotation of trucks. You kind of look and look up on social media, what's the truck coming? And it provides it's an important component of brewery business, I feel, to draw. And and I've seen the difference here. My wife and I were driving. We had we had our stepdaughter in town and and we went over to we drove by Sponge City. And they were they were packed. You know, they have food. We thought, ooh, that's that's full. Let's drive over to Better Days. Better is not able to have food trucks come through and there was almost nobody there. I could really see the difference having food makes. I think it would make a tremendous difference in our in supporting our breweries. It's a fun thing for the customer experience to to different trucks. The reason for two trucks is usually they bring in a sweet truck with a savory truck. It's nice to have a dessert truck there, a cupcake truck or ice cream truck. So we we talked about more. I like having variety, but two, we thought was a good. And then the idea of the restaurant, there was some concerns expressed about. What if the vacant lots start rolling in trucks all the time? They switch from parking lots to to food truck lots. And that's why we thought the idea of, well, if we have they gotta have restrooms, permanent restrooms already available and they would be ADA compliant just. Through their own approval process. So that was a way to try to mitigate that.
So I I have to do a question for you then. How do we reconcile? Because one of the reasons besides having the bricks and mortar. And and you use a brewery as an example. I appreciate that. Somebody who's opening up a brewery. Either when they're opening it up, they they could they ask themselves, am I gonna provide food? And they have the ability to expand their 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 bricks and mortar location. You know, you know, one of the things we discussed is, you know, real estate tax where where we were trying to keep our revenue. Within Tarpon Springs and having and acknowledging that the state does require us to be. Accepting food trucks. And when we vetted this process years ago. You know, our our driving force was to check those bricks or border locations who pay real estate taxes. You know, employ people. Can you imagine a brewery having a food truck where their a location is next to a restaurant? And and that's that was part of the concern that we had when we tried to allow the food trucks, but limit them in scope. For that reason was to protect our our taxpayers and our bricks and mortar properties who pay real estate taxes. So that was that was our driving force.
Well, I think this could support the breweries who pay real estate, you know, have lower taxes as well. It's a way to support that business sector, which. Is very important in redevelopment. The breweries have a whole audience they bring to town. People seek out breweries. They go to try them out. There's brewery tours. There's brewery trails. Some gentlemen are here from the brewery. They can speak to that. But it's a it's a great economic development tool and a way we can support them and provide a better customer experience, I think, for people coming to visit. If you go to our neighboring communities, the food trucks park on the street in front of the place and you can go outside, get your food, go back inside. But I think customers in terms of protecting the restaurants from competition, I know my wife, for example, we go to the First Friday. She won't eat outside at a food truck or vendor. She wants to sit out in a restaurant. That's her preference. So we sit in the restaurants at any special event where there's a restaurant available rather than sit outside and eat from a vendor. So I think it's just an opportunity to 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 support business, to expand. The breweries are paying taxes here in the community and supporting the community. It's a way to increase, improve their business model. And I think there's an expectation. I know from the public, when you check out, when I check out a brewery, my wife and I, we look for the food truck. What's the what food truck are they gonna have? And if it changes, it gives us a reason to go back and try the different foods. So this is, I think, a simple change. That I highly recommend would 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 do a lot, I think, for our business community and 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 our visitors would help our visitor experience.
I do have one comment on that in that way back when, when I lived in conservative Frigid, Minnesota. They actually did not allow a lot of our places to sell any kind of alcohol without also selling food. And it's it's an idea of you shouldn't just be drink, drink, drink without, you know, eating a bit. And I think this is also a little bit of a a good thing also.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I have a little preface before I ask my question. Just I think I'm glad that Chair Kuzcutis mentioned. Brought up the fact that like, you know, what is driving this? Because I think I understand what's driving it. I watched the meeting in January seventh and I understand a lot of the motivation is for the breweries. But the, the problem I think that we're having here is that these, we're talking about multiple districts and this, the special area plan and outside the special area plan. So the special area plan includes the sponge docks and downtown. And those are distinct in of, of themselves, right? And then we also have the breweries, which are not in either, some of these are not in either district, not in the special area plan at all. So to, to apply one, um, which I understand exactly what you're saying. I've been to these breweries and they don't have food and you want to eat when you drink craft beer because there's, there's nothing else there. Okay, so I get it, but, but that's not what we do downtown, doesn't just have craft beer. They have restaurants and they don't have just bars. There's nothing like that downtown. And then at the docks also, we don't have anything that's just a bar. And, and I can tell you as, um, as somebody who, you know, has had property down there through generations is that we discourage uh, any retail people, you know, tenants from, from selling anything that would compete with our restaurant business. Because that's for them. So we already, that's again, it's you're serving, you have different interests in different districts. So to apply this as a blanket is, i- i- I understand the motivation, I get it. And I, I, I met this gentleman before and, um, I get it, there's no food there, they're not even in either of these districts. So there's different concerns for each district. And so one of my questions, and I, I appreciate the staff because I, I talked to Renee and Pat about my concern about vacant, uh, not vacant lots, which is a huge concern, but parking lots. And I see that that was being addressed here by saying improve, that this is not applied to improved land, um, that does not have permanent restroom facilities. But then I want to know what the definition for what does improved land mean? I, I don't know what that has defined. And then, because if, without knowing what that definition is, then you could just throw some permanent restrooms on there, which isn't going to cost much for somebody who's, you know, has a huge parking lot. And then all of a sudden, phew, okay, we're not improved, you know, now we have these restrooms. So I, that needs to be defined a lot more. And, but I appreciate that the intent was to not allow commercial and, and that, you know, is understood. So, um, and then I do understand, you know, um, Mr. Zimbella's is concerned about preferred vendors. And, and it's not, I understand the consti, the constitutional restrictions about that. But what we're trying to say is there's a lot of people that are coming here, outside vendors, that are making money here and they come and they leave. And then it's like, what, some of our people would like, we have local vendors that would like at least an opportunity. I, I'm not sure how that can be, whether they get incentives in some way or another, um, how that could be addressed. Um, and then the other issue is, uh, code enforcement. Uh, what I don't want to see is, I, I know how this is going to be enforced, it's through code enforcement, right? We have one code enforcement officer and it's just going to be a burden. And I don't want to put that burden on fellow residents and fellow business owners that are going to be having to police this at 10 o'clock every night to make sure that they're gone. Um, and I, people know me, I take it upon myself to go down and police things. And I can tell you that right now, there's somebody who is continuing to just not follow the rules in certain areas. It doesn't matter how many times they're called and, um, we're just going to put a burden on that. And, and I just don't think without, without a, I don't, I just don't think saying code enforcement is going to do it. Because everybody knows when you call code enforcement that if, if I can't see it, then it's not, it didn't happen unless I'm watching it happen. And we're just not staffed that way. So I just don't want to burden our fellow, you know, business owners and residents that this might put a burden on. Just because it might benefit a few, we need to really make this something that is particular. I, I get it, if it's very particular to breweries, then let's make it that way. If this is what that's for, let's say this is for breweries that only serve alcohol. Because we don't have those in other districts. So the need and the, the demand in this is different in every district. So we can't be putting a blanket rule over that just to help a few, um, because of the, ultimately it might really burden a lot of people. So if, Pat, you can answer any of those questions for me. For the improved land and, um, you know.
How they separate.
How we separate the districts and, and things like that. Because before we go any, from what I'm hearing so far is it, this is a really big, broad spectrum. And then there's other issues, as, as Ms. Swenson brought up about this random, and I've heard, I've had, I've heard multiple complaints. Like, how is this food truck operating behind this gas station? I have no idea.
And, and I have one more follow-up if I may. So, and I'll, and I'll just use, maybe there's an existing, uh, brewery on, on alternate 19. And when they got their permit, there may have been certain parking restrictions. You can only have, you know, you need so many parking spaces per, per building. But if you put a food truck, you're reducing the parking. So then they're not in compliance with the parking requirements if in fact the food truck is there. So that, you know, so, and, and so that's an issue that I also probably need, would need to be addressed in the ordinance that, to the extent that there are a number of, of parking spaces that are required under their permit to operate, that the, the, uh, the, I guess the placement of a food truck cannot reduce what the required parking requirements would be. Because that, that's taking away what, what, exactly what their minimum parking requirements that the state, city requires them to have. Obviously down in the downtown area, there may not be those requirements because of the access to the city parking, uh, city parking. But some places there is a city parking lot nearby. And I don't know if they get any credits because the parking lot may be walking distance, I don't know. But, but if they have onsite parking that the city required them to have to get permitted, the reduction of those parking spaces would in fact violate their, their, I guess, their conditional use or whatever permit they would have gotten to, to open up. So I, I know that's, that's a, that's a concern. And I think Mr. Vessi may have a question as well.
I, I do unless you have a follow-up. I actually, so if, as long as it's a follow-up question, I would, go ahead.
What if it's not?
Well.
No, it is, it is. I'm sitting here listening and trying, you know, with myself doing devil's advocate. And I'm listening to the concerns about parking. But in effect, that food truck is parking there and it's not a permanent parking, it's a temporary parking. Is that correct?
Correct.
Temporary. So my view on it arguably, if, you know, arguing both sides is that, if a business that has parking as required by the city decides to give a couple of those spaces to a temporary food truck, I think it's their prerogative. They may be cutting out parking for potential beer drinking patrons. I don't know, but it's arguable that they're not violating because it's temporary.
Well, I could argue that all day long.
Well, back and forth. I mean, the, the intent is to bring more people. I mean, I think that's clear, so that doesn't, that, yeah.
That you're expanding the, you're expanding the business model of the facility.
They're trying to, they're trying to bring more people.
You're, you're expanding the business model and not having parking for, for use of its patrons.
Gotcha. Okay, well.
And that would, that would be an argument I would make, but, uh, I could go further, but I, I don't think I need to.
So something that would be helpful, particularly in reference to the docks, is if they were rather than hypothetical, if there were a, uh, I've, I've been sitting here trying to think of where a food truck could actually go there. It's not a, an improved lot or improved lot with no bathrooms, it's not in the right way. I can't think of a place.
When, if you could give us the definition of what an improved lot is.
Well, I would say a site plan, you know, that when they pave a parking lot and then it comes in with a site plan, you know.
So.
I, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
A commercial parking lot is a principal use on a property. So that's an improved property, it's not vacant with no use.
Right, so, but, so.
But they install bathrooms and.
But they install bathrooms and it's good to go.
Yeah.
So, okay. So, so, so they would have to install bathrooms as an accessory to a principal use.
Of parking.
Of parking, which I believe is conditional. I, I, I mean, it's an eventuality, I suppose we could prohibit. I, I don't know if we want to do that. It's, you know, it's, it's difficult to write a code to every eventuality. But I suppose if somebody wants to invest that to get food trucks, we'd have to address that.
Thing to consider, you know, in my experience of operating food truck, you know, you'd pay like $25 to, to park somewhere. So the revenue, uh, even daily, I don't think would substantiate building restrooms, um, you know, on a, on a parking lot versus the parking revenue I think you would get. But again, that's all hypothetical, um, situations. But I, I can't think of where a food truck could go at the docks currently.
But I'll, I'll let Mr. Vessi go because I think he's going to cover probably a lot of what I haven't, so.
I, I, I have a, a couple of questions, might have several, and then a couple of comments. But it probably would be handy to have that ordinance available for a couple of my questions. First sentence as defined, where the new underlined is, non-residential zoned or utilized areas of the city.
Where are you looking, Mr. Vessi?
Top page first sentence. Non-residentially zoned.
Oh, here, okay.
Okay, I'll read the whole thing. As defined in FS 509.102, comma, mobile food dispensing vehicles may operate in non-residentially zoned or utilized areas of the city. But what, I, I'm, I, I want, that seems just a little bit vague to me as to what that might mean.
Utilized areas of the city, that's very vague.
Non-residentially zoned, okay. So would that mean that it could operate right adjacent to a residentially zoned? Let's say for example here on, uh, on Stafford, we've got residential on one side and non-residential on the other. And there's about 30 feet apart and it would be okay for the food truck to be right next to that residentially zoned?
It could at a business property, some sort of business property on a, you know, during the day between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. That's all. So the person, the, the residence is already next to a business that theoretically is open during the day at least. So this would add a food truck to it.
And then down under, under I, now this is just kind of technical stuff, but it's written here and, and there's a lot there. Under I, mobile food dispensing vehicle must display in the vehicle results of any DBPR inspections for cleanliness and sanitation. I could be wrong, but I think it's the county health department that does, um, inspections of food vehicles. I think DBPR is more of a licensing agency, a little bit of a scrutiners there. But it is an ordinance, we probably want to get that. And then, and then in, in J, the standards of this section shall not be applied to the establishment of mobile food dispensing vehicles as accessory to accessory to food and drink establishments as regulated under 5605. Okay, I don't think I have 56, I haven't gotten that far, but the term food and drink. So we have some places that, and, and I was here when we overlabored the first set of rules, we really spent a lot of time on that. But that typically was focused on restaurants or food and drink that were bar restaurants. But would this open up, this is hypothetical, but here's the question. We have some drink only facilities. Would just 5605, would that open up the ability for, let's say there's a distillery that doesn't have a kitchen? Would that allow them to set up a semi-permanent food truck at the distillery? It's they, because they're a drink establishment, they're not food and drink, but they're drink.
Yes, under 5606.
Under 5606.
We've already had two go through the process.
Okay.
And we had two existing, one got flooded, I'm not sure what this, their status is. But, so we probably have three right now since the ordinance was passed in 2020.
So said distillery just uses as an example, just a thought experiment, they could bring a food truck in seven days a week, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, run a food truck every single day at the distillery?
Yes, it's 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
They probably can, but they were in at the commissioner meeting and that is not their intent. I think you need to hear from some of these.
Yeah, so they, so they.
Please forgive me, I'm, I'm just asking a few questions.
And just to clarify, they've got to drive off every night. They've got to dispose of their wastewater as licensed back at their state and county licensed disposal spot. So that has to happen.
Okay. And this is just me, because it, it's complicated, there's a lot here.
Yeah, I'm not sure how many food trucks would drive seven days a week up and back, maybe there are some.
I have to think in pictures, so I'm just got a picture.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Under, uh, temporary use permits required A and B. So on the B side, residential property zone or utilized may host one mobile food dispensing vehicle twice per calendar year. Each event is limited to one day. Residential property, so this is more or less saying somebody's got a house, wants to have a graduation party. They can twice a year have a food truck come out and park there for the day. Okay, limited to one day. But if we go back to A, it says each event may last up to three days.
Yes, so for, so, uh, B is, is in place now, that's for residential.
Uh, and this is non-residential.
And A is for non-residential.
Okay, non-residential gets a three-day stay, residential's get a one-day stay.
Right, because it's in a residential area, so there was no appetite for opening up and, um, to my knowledge, really no requests to open that up any further from, from.
Okay.
The public.
And then all the way down at number two about generators, and this is where it gets kind of sticky because the generators make all the noise. May only be operated, this is two under residential between the hours at 10:00 AM and 9:00 PM. So that's an hour less than the commercial side unless.
Yeah, that's, that's number two under K, so that applies to all of them.
That applies to all of them, okay. So they only get a run till, the temporary only gets a run till nine o'clock unless they ask for a special permission from the TRC.
Yeah, unless there's some reason for TRC to authorize it, not sure what that would be. But I, I think the, the more, um, uh, the better part of this is they can't start up the generator till 10:00 AM either. So that's, you know.
And then all the way back to the top, it's always about enforcement, right? So it's easy for us to write rules, you've got these great sign rules that we got that just, they're so complicated and tough to enforce, this is, is going to be one of those. But I want to go back to the top about where they can be. I don't have a foot in on, you know, sponge docks or city, but just, just more or less where they can be. And it says, all right, we can put them anywhere that's non-residentially zoned. So as I understand this, the, the, the regulatory process is that they have to apply for a permit to have the food truck, anybody does.
A business tax receipt.
Business tax receipt. And when they do that, that's going to go through planning and zoning department to verify that where they're putting it is in fact zoned, non-residential.
Yes, among other things, we'll first look at the zoning. Or, or the use, it'll, it'll have to be, if it's in a commercial zone, but it's a single-family residence, it's being utilized as.
Because we have a lot of those properties, kind of tricky. We've got one right here on, on Stafford, Safford, just a little bit north. It looks all retail and mercantile, but in fact it's residential on, underlying.
Well, like I say.
So if it's mixed, does residential trump that and mean that they cannot?
So in that first paragraph, um, that, that, that second sentence does, the very first paragraph of the ordinance clarify that, that mixed use is considered non-residential. But again, zoned or utilized. So if it is, uh, residential, if it's a residence or, or townhomes or whatever, then, then it, it doesn't apply to, to that property. They, they can't do this, they can't have a food truck.
Okay, so then I got to do one more hypothetical and then I'll let other questions go. So, um, Icarra, Icarra down over here by the grocery store, that's a. Icarra, Icarra down over here by the grocery store, that's a mixed use. They've got some little unused offices underneath, and then they got apartments above, but it's mixed use. That means that someone could set up two food trucks, run them seven days a week with their generators till 10:00 PM underneath the apartments.
Okay, to my knowledge, that's a residential property being used.
And you know what I would.
It is a mixed-use zoning, but it's being used, it's 100% residential.
So this is where it gets sticky, and that's why it's important we get into this, because if you pull up there, they have business offices, they're not occupied. But they've got spaces down there that were supposed to be for, let's say, a realtor or a gym or something. No, am I wrong on that?
Now, the Icarra property itself was part of a larger mixed-use project. So there are offices, and it included the Windexy Shopping Center and all of that. The Icarra parcel property itself is strictly residential to my knowledge, but.
Okay, so I think you can get the crux.
So what you're asking is, if you've got a mixed-use property.
Yep.
Can you do this? And yeah, you can, basically. We would look at, we would look at it when the application came in. But yeah, if the business, again, if people are operating a business between 7:00 and 10:00, or 10:00, 10:00 AM and 9:00 PM, if they had a food truck, really, staff doesn't really, really see a huge extra impact with that if there's already a business being operated next to a residence. But we could look at that with each individual application.
Okay, and thanks for your patience. So I had questions, and I just have one comment. The comment would be, I think that this could use some refinement, and then my thrust of some of those questions were, is that for everyone that loves something, there's someone that doesn't. And not that food trucks aren't a fantastic idea, I love beer, I love food, except that we often have to get the results of after we think it's a great decision, but there's a people that don't. And I think that they're not being represented here, especially the residences who don't want a food truck, that have to listen to it when they get surprised. So maybe there could be some finessing to protect those people from such a thing, thanks for your time.
If I could, just because I just want to go right off of what Mr. Vessi said, because it's a good point, and he's always brought up the fact that when we rezone things, there's a reason they were zoned a certain way. Right? And not just because of where they are, but because of everything around it. Okay, so it's a really good point to say that even if you're non-residential, doesn't mean you're like not right next to residential. And what Mr. Kuskunis was hitting on was, there's, Athen Street down there, and where I live, and where he's got property, and where we had the, I think it was that road where they built their house, the White House, that everybody was, didn't like the architecture of. It's a mixed use, I think it's W1, is it W?
Oh, Waterfront Development District.
W1, but it's, so technically it would go under non-residential because it's mixed. Like, where I live, I can't even get FedEx, I can't put that on an app, because it defines me as commercial, even though I'm not, because just as you said, the default would be if it's mixed use. And so when they came for their application, like, oh, well, we're not trying to put something commercial there. Like, well, we didn't think that you would, but you can, right? And so that's the fear, and obviously, that's what, what we're saying is that this is, there's these little tiny, like, they're not loopholes, but that's what we're pointing out, is that we're just trying to make sure that if the intent is for the breweries and distillery, does the city have a definition for what a brewery and a distillery is? If that's the case, let's define it for these distinct, you know, places. And if not, then maybe that's something we have to go back and do, because that seems to be, I mean, they're the only people here tonight. So unless there's another intent that we're not aware of, which is, I'm not, I don't think that's what's happening, I think it's just a matter of just being a little bit too broad. I mean, I will say that right now, practically, I think the other thing that we had in place was not practical. Who wants to add a food truck to a food rush? I mean, that doesn't make any sense, right? So I don't think that that's why we've had, what, two applications? And one of them was next to me, it didn't work out. Because you already have the food. That's the use, but then why are we making it so that they can just go like hog wild? You know?
I think there's some comments, additional questions on this side, and I apologize, I'm looking this way. So I don't see, but, but you haven't spoken, then we'll work our way down to the other end.
Yeah, and I did note a couple of questions, I'll come back and answer.
Yeah, thanks, Pat, for the explanation, and I think you've heard enough concern from the fellow members here about what we used to call factors of impact. So anytime there's change, there's people who love it, there's people who don't, as Mr. Vessi mentioned. Preponderance could go, you know, great one way or the other. But it comes down to equality of life for, especially these areas that have concurrence of use or directly adjacent to residential use, where maybe it's been quiet for decades. What I've always dealt with, with quality of life complaints, was mostly due to frequency and duration. So you're allowing it every day. It may not happen every day, but you would be allowing it every day for a very good portion of the day. So that, that would cover the frequency and duration that usually starts to irk people. People may start off liking stuff, but whether it's noise, or light, or smoke, or whatever, if it's starting to happen all the time, you know, they're going to pray for the wind to change, or for something, a power outage or something of that thing. But what I've found is, as people have brought up, there are specific places where it may be great, and maybe specific places where it's going to require a little more scrutiny. And the fact that we don't have predominant enforcement for when things are not going well, or there's an acute incident or such, I think just, it just warrants a little bit of guarding as to, you know, allowing a blanket permission for this to happen everywhere. And the parking concern was brought up, and it does, you can have a food truck take up six spots, and now people come to eat as well as drink or whatever, and they're on the side streets, and they're narrowing that, and that becomes a, you know, safety concern also. People parking where they may, not supposed to be parked, but it's dark, and they don't know, and there's not signage, and they don't even see that there's a driveway adjacent from it. So there's, I think it's, it should be more specific to the application, and hopefully that is in the plans to say, let's take a look at it on paper, and then let's take a look at it in the field, because I've found that what we see on the screen or on paper, and what happens out there on a regular basis can often be quite different.
Yeah.
So just wanted to make that mention, thanks.
Thank you.
If I could, I absolutely, I agree with everything Mr. Rothlin just said. And I, I don't profess to know the ins and outs of food trucks, but I know, you know, in sitting here and reading all this and listening to everyone, I know if I lived in a residence that happened to be mixed use, or there ended up being a food truck by me, by my residents, I know how badly generators smell, I know how loud they are. And with people parking or not knowing how they should park, I mean, all that would really create a problem. I guess I'm babbling a bit, but I tend to agree that there needs to be a little more structure to this, a little more detail. And one other thing I wanted to throw out there, because I don't know, who gets? Is there going to be potentially competition for food truck permits? And how does the city determine who gets a permit and who doesn't?
Not sure what, what mechanism you're talking about that would generate competition with a business. So the, so the the occupational license, for lack of a better term, is pulled by the business owner, not the food truck. The business owner pulls an occupational, a separate occupational for a food truck use. So I'm not sure where the, I'm not understanding your question on where the competition would be.
So we're only talking about established businesses having food trucks as an extension?
Yeah.
Not private food trucks that want to sell their food?
Then the business, the brewery would then hire a food truck to sell their food. The brewery, if it's a brewery or whatever it is, would have the occupational license that allows that use on the property.
Okay, quick question. It's 605B, the mobile food truck dispensing unit should not operate in any form, public right-of-way, or city-owned property unless operating in conjunction with an authorized special event, which is separate. So does this mean they cannot, they cannot be put on the street? They have to be put in a special parking area, or what?
Yeah, and that's one of the.
But they're not going to be on the street, they're going to be like in one of these establishments parking lot or something.
Right, and that's one of the questions that came up. So when they provide a site plan, it will have to be, the food truck will have to comply with item C, 5605C. So they can't be in the drive aisle, they can't be in required parking spaces, they can't be on a walkway leading into the building. They cannot obstruct traffic flow, pedestrian flow, they can't be in a handicap spot. I think the example earlier about a food truck taking up a parking spot. Okay, so I'm guessing something like a hot dog cart, which is a food truck in this, the kind you see on the highway all the time in front of Lowe's or whatever. They could maybe fit into one. But if it's a requi, and there are plenty of businesses that have excess parking around. If it's a required parking space, then they can't use that. They would have to be, say, next to the building out of the drive aisle. Some people, we've had a couple come in for temporary events, they'll put it on the grass for the day, next to the parking lot, or in the gravel, or somewhere in their yard on their property. And like you're saying, it can't be on any kind of city right-of-way sidewalk road. So that would address the parking.
Mr. Zambellis?
Um, just, so I understood that the, I'll use the brewery, the brewery would apply for an occupational license?
Yes, for the food truck used, and then it could host any food truck on the site.
But does that become revenue for the brewery company? Because they're the ones occupying, they're the ones applying for an occupational license to add a food truck to their properties/business, because I think you're going to be, they would be applying for that occupational license under their business. So does, does the food truck sales count as revenue for the brewery?
No, we have the occupational license now for food trucks, because.
But you're saying that the food truck doesn't apply for it?
I'm sorry.
Thought you said that the food truck doesn't apply.
No, they don't, we have the occupational for the business owner to apply to have the the, under the second part of the ordinance that allows the permanent food truck with a business, the business has to apply for the occupational. The food truck technically doesn't have to be theirs, that was, well, it doesn't have to be branded as theirs.
Let's play that up.
The occupational tax is not collected by how much revenue, it's a straight fee. So they're just going to pay a straight fee like they do now.
On the business?
On the food truck occupational license, in addition to their occupational they already have for the business. So we don't have to worry about calculating.
So if I'm, is the point that you're getting at, is that, is this money even coming back to Tarpon Springs?
Tarpon Springs.
Because if the case is that there are people that just want to go to a certain food truck, which we have actually heard in January 7th meeting, I will go all the way to St. Petersburg to go to this specific food truck. And if that's the case, then they might, these, the same people that said they actually bring their own food to our breweries, they'll probably bring their own drinks too, okay? So if they're going to come all the way here just to see a food truck, that isn't going to bring any revenue into our city, then, and that's just, I think that's the point, and maybe, and then the other thing I want to just comment on.
Right, and obviously, we, no, they can't bring, they can't bring drinks.
I just think that's what the point is.
But the revenue comes from the increased business with the business, that's where it comes from.
Second and third or fourth this, and I actually addressed this exact issue with Mr. Rudd about a month ago, when this issue came up, was a concern about parking, and it's been echoed, everyone has mentioned it here, is because there is already a concern with some of these breweries and distilleries about parking, that they don't have enough parking as it is today. And I don't know even how that happened, but I can promise you that if they're putting a food truck in their parking, that it's, I mean, and they are parking the people that, when they overflow, because the limited parking that they have, if they have enough money to be buying other things, they have enough money to be running more parking and doing that, and they're already obstructing right-of-ways in extremely, you know, important in areas where, you know, I've addressed concern in that. So that, and I'm glad that it was addressed tonight, that there is a parking issue, especially when it gets into non-residential, but residential across the street. Because if they're coming just to see a food truck, they will just park in front of people's homes, and it's going to be at night, 10 o'clock at night, summer or winter, it's going to be dark out, you're not going to see stop signs, people will, I promise you, I see it every day, I can show you the pictures, code enforcement can, they park right in front of stop signs, right after stop signs, they don't care, and especially if it's not their community.
And that's certainly something that the police can be notified of.
These are all issues that are not addressed in any of these.
Yeah, on-street parking is always an issue, police are capable to address it.
But it can't be one that we just like, just say it's an issue, we have to, we have to address it.
We invented this thing, and Mr. Zambellis has one more comment, and I have one more comment.
Personal, that I intimately was involved in, I'm not going to name the establishment. But I briefly was in a business with my son that was beer only and liquor. And we were part of a franchise, and we would go to all the local restaurants, get their menus, negotiate a discounted rate, so that we could make something off of that. And it was a win-win. Then the franchise is sold, and they decided they wanted to put kitchens in. And they went from Kitchen 1 to Model 2, Model 3, Model 4. And the next thing we knew, the restaurants were not competing by putting beer, all the variety of beer in their restaurants, and we lost our business because of that. So I'm just thinking, are we looking at other business models besides a food truck? I mean, we've got a lot of restaurants here. You even got restaurants that are in nearby communities. Can that be a model where they look at negotiating with restaurants, because it becomes a win-win? You make money off of it, because they'll discount their, and they deliver the food. You're not going to be limited to a lot of parking in the way, so something that I.
Yeah, I'm familiar with what you're talking about.
I have one more question, and then I think we need to open it up, because we vetted this pretty much. But Mr. Rudd, I have a question for you. That's okay. And I appreciate you, as you probably could see, I don't know if you're, as a P and Z board, we try to vet these things pretty thoroughly. But before these changes in this ordinance, couldn't the existing businesses who want a food truck, couldn't they operate under the old ordinance? Why would they, could they operate under the old ordinance? Because.
They had to own, they would have to own the food truck.
Okay.
It'd be like burgers and beignets, it has to say the name on the side.
An investment.
So, all right, so I'm going to, at this point, unless anybody has any more questions for Pat and.
There was one question, I just, so I think I answered the parking, and he improved lots of questions. There was some question about enforcement, noise, smell, smoke, lighting. So those are all things that we have ordinances that cover pretty much all of that now. I will say that the Tarpon, you know, we did not allow food trucks at all. We've had lots of inquiries, especially after that first ordinance came in, a lot of inquiries from people that would come in to the lobby and ask about food trucks in Tarpon. We hand them this regulation, they basically, you know, we really haven't, we've heard one today that you've observed. that you've observed since Epiphany, I know which one you're talking about. I live in town now, and I can think of one other one I've seen from time to time that I know hasn't come in for something. Beyond that, it's not like we've had a lot, or even several, food trucks coming in to operate illegally. As far as an enforcement problem, I think there's a perception we're going to have a huge enforcement problem. Maybe, maybe not, we could, we could see how this plays out. But all those items are things that, especially noise. I mean, I'm not sure, with an added food truck, if the business is generating that much noise, there's other things that may be happening, live music, crowds, those things already are something that we address with enforcement. So just kind of wanted to capture that and bring it back. You know, and I know we do have some members of the public, maybe they can expand on how they operate.
Thank you, I guess it's appropriate time to see if there's any public comment with regard to this.
I just had a few things to say, I am not a business owner.
Could you give your name and address, please?
Oh, Jane Harrington, 1021 Jamaica Way, Tarpon Springs. Lived here in Florida for just about five years. I am the one who spoke at that January meeting. I just want to let you know, my husband and I chose to come here. We thought it was a wonderful place. But I can tell you, I am tired of going to Dodecanese and have halas or rusty bellies as about my only choice. I took my 95-year-old mother out this afternoon to give her something else to do. We went to Wine at the Docks. So yes, there is another place on the docks that is not just beer, Wine at the Docks. She loves the sangria. We ate the popcorn that they brought in from somewhere else, I don't know, hanging on the rack. My mother ate one of the great big bags of it. But you've got to realize, local people don't just, five years later, want to go to halas or rusty bellies. We want to be down on Dodecanese. Yes, parking is a problem. I can no longer take my mother to little shops on Athen Street because I can't get her parked close enough. That has nothing to do with a food truck. Parking is a separate issue. People want to experience other things, other restaurants. A hot dog cart by, at the end, where Wine at the Docks is, do you know how many people would walk down to that end of the docks that don't walk down there now? That has nothing to do with the halas. We certainly, we go to First Friday, and the Merchants Association sells their beer and sells their wine. We go over to Craig Park, the Merchants Association makes their money with their beer, their wine. Why are we forbidding local places protecting the Greek and the local brick and mortar restaurants, whether they're the Italian, whether they're up on Sanford, the Tarpon Tavern, Currents, all of those restaurants, Wine Society? Why not let there be competition? Everybody does not want to go to a restaurant, and I appreciate, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but I appreciate your idea of go in there, call up some restaurant, order, wait for it to be delivered. How long does that take to get down to the docks? I don't think that this is a problem that is going to take away business. I think you're going to bring more people. You go down those docks at 6 o'clock at night, it's dead. Wouldn't it be nice if they could do some music? It's mostly, it's all commercial. And have a food truck, bring in new people. We started, it's unfortunate, we started going out of Tarpon just to experience different things, because this gets, I never thought it would get tiring, but this has gotten tiring after five years. And we do, unfortunately, we do go out a lot. So we don't like to stay home, we like to go out. New restaurants, that's what we like, so.
Thank you.
Give it some thought, thank you.
Any other comment? And I apologize, we tried to limit it to three minutes, and I didn't, no, no, I didn't, I didn't stop you. Because I forgot to hit the timer, but go ahead.
Hello, Jason Leonard, 311 North Safford, Brighter Days Brewing. Really just here to give you our experience, we're going on year five now in town. I can imagine the task of having to have a rule that encompasses different sections of town. Obviously, the docks is different than downtown, is different than the CRA with us. When we first looked at the property, which we do own the property, so we are business owners that, property owners that pay taxes, so there's that piece too. But we were encouraged that that corridor, where we're at, was supposed to help shrink the distance between downtown and the Sponge Docks with giving people something to do and using the trail, utilizing the trail to kind of help shrink that distance. So COVID obviously changed a bunch of things in this industry. When you get outside of Tarpon, it's symbiotic, the food truck with the brewery. That's kind of just how, what people expect, so. I don't want to say it's daily, but it's multiple times a week, hey, why don't you do a food, like, so, you know, we deal with that. Those are the expectations of people that don't live in town, that come to town, that, hey, this is weird, why aren't you doing this? When we first purchased the building in 2018, there were some limitations on what we could do kitchen-wise. Sponge City came up. They have proven the model that food is now actually a requirement. Like, it used to be a nice-to-have, but now it's, you kind of got to have it if you're going to, if you're going to compete in this environment. So there are some fire hydrant issues and reasons why we couldn't get what we needed to the building that was anywhere near cost-effective to be able to do it. So we definitely explored that. Obviously, anything I say, it's speaking from our selfish position. It kind of sounded like you were talking something about a world of beer franchise. Oftentimes, those were in a condensed kind of courtyard area where everything was walking distance. So man would love nothing more than to have all the local restaurants' menus. But now we're blocks away from Tarpon Tavern, Backdrafts. Now you're talking about them having to staff differently, and people, you know, to, it's, it's not as easy as someone being able to walk something down to the, to the business, so. We just want to do everything we can, obviously, it helps us. I don't think it's a game changer by any means, but I tell you what, our customer expects it. However we can, you guys set the rules, we'll play by the rules, we just want to do it and do it the best that we can. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing, and hopefully it works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Matt Lane, I'm also with, you know, Brighter Days. I just got something really, really quick, I think this is great, you know, everybody can talk and vet and, and, you know, not agree, disagree, and things of this sort. I just want to tell a quick story, personal. So I opened up a food boat business, thought it was in Tarpon, ended up being right by Ms. Vicki's, and I was a third slip-in, and I actually fell over the boundary out of Tarpon into Pasco County. And we went round and round just like this and all that. And I asked one question one day, I said, can y'all just come check me out? And understand, and so I'm asking the same thing here with me and my partners here, just come check us out. I get it, the grand scope of things, and listening, it did sound broad, but just come check us out one time and see what we offer, see what we're trying to do, and understand the whole gist of it before a decision is yes or no, because I get it, everything is kind of complex and all that. And the last thing I would say is, the generator, the noise, and things of that sort, technology has changed, just like these cell phones in our pocket. Some people's cars are louder than what a generator. You know, one avenue we've explored is, we're running a, if we got it approved, running a cable, a 30-yard cable, that it's no generator, it's powered right off our building. So the smell, you run a diesel generator or anything these days, you got a problem. You know, so I would just say, it's a great concern, but the technology and stuff these days is so much more advanced, and the decimal noise, if you even ran a generator. But I'll leave y'all with this.
Thank you.
They came out and seen me, and they liked what I was doing, and they granted me to run a boat business, I would just invite you out.
Before you leave, could you say your address, please, for the record?
311 North Safford with Brighter Days.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you for your time, I think it's great.
Okay. Well, you want to save that for.
Do we have any more public comments?
Unless it's a question, you want to save that for a motion or whatever? Is there any other public comment? If not, is there anybody who's called in, or emailed, or any of that stuff with regard to this?
No, emails, or.
At this point, I want to go ahead and close. Unless you want to address something, Pat, I was going to close a public comment, and then we could discuss amongst the board. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at this point. And now we could discuss amongst the board. And I'm wondering if we should do a motion first, and then we could have a discussion. So at this point, I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Oh, I'll go ahead and make the motion to.
All right, now that we've got a motion in a second, what's the motion?
Well, I'm, well, if I'm going to make the motion to approve, it would be with conditions, but I just really want to, I want to discuss this. So, I mean, my conditions are going to be like, I can listen. It would be that this goes like, it would have to be that each special area code would be half, each district would be distinct. So not within the special area code, it would have to be the Sponge, not even just a special area plan, but it would have to be the Sponge Docks downtown, the CRA. There would have to be, we'd have to vet, you know, figure out how, the timing, that would have to be approved, because I think that Mr. Rockline made a really good point about the all-day, you know. So I mean, my conditions are going to be like, what I'd really like to say is this should just go back for discussion and direction again, but I just really want to be able to discuss this, because I don't think that we're going in the direction that's going to approve this tonight with any conditions. But if we can't talk about it, then.
Yeah, so, but I guess your motion is, it's hard to define your motion, because you have a lot of conditions.
Because we really want to, I think we want to progress with this.
Okay, but you have to second what motion she's presenting.
Okay, I'll rescind my motion.
Yeah, but she's got a motion with conditions, you may not, you may not want to second the conditions.
Counsel, can I rescind my motion, make a new motion?
If I may help.
Let's, let me let Georgiana finish.
Can I rescind my, and make a new motion?
You want to amend your motion?
Amend my motion?
Yes.
I'd like to amend the motion to apply just to breweries and distilleries.
Apply just to breweries and what?
To approve this to apply to only breweries and distilleries.
Okay.
So the motion is to approve the ordinance specifically for breweries and distilleries, to limit the food truck, the ordinance for the, for food trucks to specific uses, specifically for breweries.
As defined by the city.
So there's a motion, is there a second to that motion?
I would second it if counsel could ask, if counsel could answer a question of would we then require a separate, unique ordinance for all the other peripheral areas that are not breweries slash distilleries to go forward for that purpose?
So I just want to clarify, make sure I understand you correctly, you want to have it for a second area?
Well, the motion brought up by Ms. Francis is specifically for breweries and distilleries. Would the P&amp;Z department then have to formulate a separate ordinance for presentation and discussion for all the other areas that this was, the original ordinance was going to encompass?
Well, I think the intent here tonight, because you are also the local planning agency, is to make the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, which is going on February 4th.
Yeah, but to answer your question.
Or would it be better to make a recommendation in the negative?
Let me answer that question, so, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to write separate ordinance. If that, those changes were made, they could be made in this ordinance. We would just, it would just be probably, maybe longer, maybe a lot longer, I'm not sure. But the changes could be made in the ordinance we have now. I don't know that we'd have to adopt a separate.
Would it help, maybe if, I think you may have hit the nail differently when you were trying to define it per area and not necessarily for business type.
My, and that's what I'm trying to get with councils, because my intent is that we're supposed, as the local, we're supposed to make a recommendation. I don't want to, if I can't make a motion in the affirmative to do anything, then I can't, we can't discuss it. So if I, unless I'm wrong, I've been told I can't make a motion in the negative, but unless that, unless we can have discussion, we want to, we want to help and move this forward, so I'm just trying to see the best way, but I don't want to, the way that's written now, I just don't think it's, I don't think there's any condition that we could add to make it workable, because it's just so.
Do you want to include certain zoning districts and name them specifically?
I think, I think that's, I think that's what you were trying to narrow down to. And if the board will allow us to little vet the district, that might make it a little bit palatable to move this thing forward. So you want to try to.
Yeah, so I'm trying to amend the motion to, the current motion, if you could, and the prior attorney would read the whole motion.
You may want to.
So that, so they can have it on the record for the whole, the number and everything, just.
So let me ask you this question, I know there was the concern, the board had a concern for mixed-use properties. Would you want the motion to include the availability to allow this for mixed-use properties?
My motion would be, no, but I, if we can add, you know, that's a condition that somebody else wants to add to second it, I just want to make sure that this, we can move forward with discussion. So my, my recommendation would be not mixed-use, the non-residential would be non-mixed-use at all, just purely commercial, if that's the.
Okay, so your motion would be something to the effect, your amended motion would be something to the effect of allow or approve with the recommendation that this be allowed in non-residential commercially-zoned properties?
Only commercially-zoned, no mixed-use, and then specifically zoned. By district, or zoned by, like, every district would have their own.
Okay, can I ask a question? Oh, you've tried, so first you said breweries and distilleries. I think I heard that you're mostly concerned with this area, this smart-gate area. That's pretty much, you know, 90%, it's all mixed-use. Do you want to specify only breweries and distilleries in that area and leave the rest?
Did we get, do we have a definition in the city code for breweries and distilleries?
No, but we can, I don't think so, I was going to look, but we can, we can come up with one. That's fetching, or we can just use the dictionary.
Do you really want to limit it to breweries and what about other businesses?
Well, let's get a, let's get a motion, let's get a motion, and then you can discuss.
What I don't want to do is just say no to this and give direction to the board, but because we are so far apart right now, I don't, and we are like really far apart, so.
Yeah, so if that was your intent, you could say in the special area plan, only breweries and distilleries can do this, that would cover basically the Sponge Docks and downtown.
Yes, but that addresses the breweries and distilleries. Then in residential, you still have an ordinance that would deal with residential with their conditions, like that you identified, no more than two years. I'm just saying we break it down by the type of area slash business.
Can I make a motion in the negative, and then so we can have discussion?
Yeah, let's, we're going all over the place, so let's, no, I understand, but let's, we're going all over the place with a bunch of discussions on motions. So, Georgiana, if you have a motion.
I'll just, I don't want to propose anything that is, not the way that, to me, I, if we can't word it in a way that's going to be.
And it may have helped, and it may have helped if we had a map of the districts. that if we were looking at putting this thing forward, we may look at restricting this to certain districts and allowing it in other districts. And I think that's where you were trying to...
They're not defined, yeah?
Yeah. So, so that's, is that what you're saying?
I would like that, I just, I would like us to discuss it. If I can make a motion in the negative, which I don't know if there is a rule against it, that's what I'm trying to ask, if there's a way that I can make, just to say that no, I'd make a motion to...
Or just, you know what? Withdraw your motion, let somebody make a motion and you can vote, we can vote, yes, up or down.
Oh, so I withdraw it.
So, so at that, so let's go ahead, if anybody, so you've withdrawn your motion?
Yeah.
Okay. And there was no second because we haven't defined what your motion was. So, at this point, if anybody wants to entertain a motion, um, then go ahead and then if we get a second, then we could discuss whether or not we want to move forward, up or down. So...
Chair, I'm gonna motion that we deny ordinance 2025-01 as written.
There are second? Okay.
Now we can have discussion.
Now we can have discussion.
And if I may, since I made the motion, we can all agree that, that ordinance is provided to us is deeply flawed.
Yes.
But it is not our job to write the ordinance. It was our job to provide feedback to staff, to our city manager and to everyone else. They need to improve the ordinance and bring it back to us when it encapsulates all the good thoughts that are there. And if I made as a side note, I thought just breweries and distilleries was a really good idea. You had me right there.
Okay, so, so, we're, so at this point, there's, there's a motion to... What did you say?
Deny.
Deny?
Deny as written and provided.
All right. Uh, with, okay, so, do you want to, so there's a motion, there's a second. We'll have a discussion and, and you've parted, you've gone forward the discussion and I think what you said has merit. I think this thing needs to be revisited with some, um, I think, Pat, it would help if we were able to have some, uh, if we wanted to limit this, we're not saying, I don't think we're saying no, but I think we're saying we need more definition as to area because obviously there's certain areas that, that this, the, the, the food trucks may be more applicable for, for approving in certain areas that, that probably is not consistent with, with what, what we're trying to preserve. So, we have the motion, we have a second, I'm gonna go ahead and, and other, other, any other discussion before I call for the motion? Uh, we, we've been at this for about an hour and a half, so I would...
All I wanted to say for the last 20 minutes was...
I'm sorry.
It's okay. All I wanted to say, plus I was sitting here and it dawned on me, I drive all the way to Home Depot for a hot dog in their little stand that's outside. I drive all the way there just for the hot dog.
Good Chicago and...
Okay. Any discussion? I do have one more item as, as guidance to staff for rewriting and revisiting.
Yeah, and, and I would rec, um...
The public speaker.
Either now or, or after, I, I need a list of, like you just said, more definition for areas. I just need some guidance or, or some concerns to list.
I can give three guidances in the positive, I can only speak for myself.
Yeah.
Specifically targeting a yes and a carve-out for breweries, carve-out in the yes for distilleries. And then perhaps a note, I would do a carve-out for no generators that, permanent land power that would solve that noise issue is what gets everybody. They need to be plugged in.
Okay.
At the provider's source. So, those are my three that I would say, hey, I'd love to see that again. Anyone else?
Yeah, parking. Also, Pat, if you would delineate the areas that we may be looking at, you know, approving or carving out as, as an exception, I think that would, that would be more beneficial than anything.
Let me clarify, carving out as an exception to...
Let's say, you know, we talked about, you know, sponge docks downtown and, and, you know, uh, the alternate 19 corridor where some of these places are, you know, um...
To, to allow the temporary or not?
Allow, allow, like the downtown, maybe allow, you know, you know...
Different rules for each district, is what I think.
Yeah, in other words, downtown may, we may limit the, the ordinance for downtown businesses or alter, alternate 19 businesses and, and maybe, uh, carve-out, you know, maybe the, the, you want to call it the, uh, what do they call it, not the, uh, Greek town store, what do you call it again, the, uh...
Well, yeah, but I mean, that's, we're kind of...
I, I understand.
You don't understand what I'm trying to get to?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
For the fourth time, I don't think you want to say brewery or refinery. I mean, I, I, I'm not a beer drinker and I haven't gone to the refinery, but I like wine. And you know, if you want to do this, you should say alcohol-serving businesses because they're not all wineries or breweries. And I don't even agree with that, but, um, if you are gonna say something, say that. But the hot dog stand she just mentioned, it might be by Lowe's, that's not even attached to an alcohol-serving place.
Okay. So, we, we had a motion, we had a second, we've had discussion, I want to go ahead and call for the motion. Roll call, please.
And this was a motion to deny?
Yeah, and this is, a yay means denial, so, so, uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Swenson? No. Ms. Early?
Yay means denial, correct?
Yeah.
Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Zambellas?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Chris Kudus?
Yes. Okay. Motion carries. And, uh, just a comment, it's, this is not necessarily a no, this is for, uh, to define, defined it a little bit better because where you, where you are, your businesses are a little bit, you know, unique locations where there's certain locations that, that, uh, may not be appropriate. Okay?
Better defining the ability to use a food truck in a way that benefits that area.
Okay. Uh, moving on, um, I've been to the last couple of meetings, um, I've been serving as, as, because I was vice chair, I was, uh, obviously moved up to chair for these meetings, but I think we need to have, uh, uh, election of officers. And so, at this point, um, I want to go ahead and, and open the door for nominations for, uh, board chair.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Chris Kudus for board chair.
Who's seconded?
Mr. Sam.
You were too slow.
I was too slow. Oh, well, I don't know if the chairmaker can, now I'm gonna have to step aside. Well, uh, let's, let's do a roll call.
Now, what's yes and what's no?
Ms. Swenson?
Yeah.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Zambellas?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Chris Kudus?
I'll abstain. I, I, you know, I, I appreciate the confidence, uh, you know, hopefully I could do a good job as Merrill did because he was very, he was excellent on it. So, we need to go ahead and, and make a motion for a vice chair and can I, do I get a lot to step aside and make a motion or do I have to let somebody else?
I'll make a motion for Mr. Vessi for vice chair.
There are second?
I didn't hear the motion.
Vessi for Mr. Vessi for vice chair. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, let's have a roll call.
Ms. Swenson?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Zambellas?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi? Mr. Chris Kudus?
Yes. Okay, uh, that being said, um, is there any comments from, from the staff?
No, thank you.
And any comments from the board? I, I do have one comment, Pat, and, and I've been known to keep meetings longer than they probably need to be, but I, I want to, uh, commend you for bringing this forward. Obviously, you know us that we try to vet everything and we're pretty sometimes difficult, but we try to get it right so we don't have to have issues or questions later on or something that's ambiguous out there that staff later on is uncertain, the direction or what, what the, what's intended. So, we'd rather vet it, deny it, refine it and move forward. So, thank you very much because...
We appreciate that. We, we hear things that we might not have thought of. I mean, it's very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you.
Likewise, Pat, both you and, and the city manager coming in offering his perspective.
And, 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 yeah, and I thank you for reading that up because I really want to thank you, Mr. Rudd, for coming because as a, as a P&amp;Z board, unfortunately, we've never had often the luxury of having a city manager here that allows us to, you know, uh, so, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
And that, I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned at 8:06.